You know how I do it.
I know how you do it.
Okay, I'm rolling again. And we started. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
It's good to see you. I feel like I haven't seen you in a long time.
Oh, you haven't.
Okay. So we are here to talk about the coming purchase of the bank building. Right? Can somebody tell me about that? When all of this process started? Why it started?
Well, before it started, we had talked about other buildings might be available because we're running out of room in the courthouse. For offices and storage. Well, now we got every office full and there's so the jobs don't have an office in here now because Rick Roberts wasn't using it, so we put the prosecutor in his office. But Rick Roberts retired, so we made needed office for a judge.
Okay, so when did you guys start having these discussions?
Well, I guess it started back in February.
January, budget on it.
Yeah, well, at budget time, we talked about it because we put money in the budget. If in case we found something we wanted to buy.
Okay, this January.
Yeah, when the example, or January.
We've actually had our eye out for ever since I've been here. This is my second term. Discuss trying to find more office space that have become available ever since I've been here.
Okay. And then I'm seeing in the April third minutes that you guys moved to go enter into a contract to purchase the building and property at two thirty-one South Market Street here in Memphis, known as the US Bank Building. And it looks like this was a unanimous decision. And then just a couple of weeks later on April sixteenth, you entered, basically you started into a contract? To purchase the building? Okay. Uh, so now that you're in it, can you release, you know, how much money the county will be paying for the building? How much money has been paid up to this point? And when you expect to close?
The money's been paid so far, six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And the total purchase price is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Plus closing?
Yeah, plus closing. But we haven't started learning. We haven't done any moral closing part of it except warrant is six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay. And then, did you do that on the sixteenth of April?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
This is May.
Okay, and then when do you expect to be closing? Is it like a thirty day or a sixty day?
Well, we don't know for sure. They told us it would be a while when we sent them this money. But we don't know for sure.
Well, it says has to be a minimum of thirty days, but I think it's closer to sixty days. They had to decommission the bank.
But it's gotta be done before that was June twenty-four.
Okay, uh, can, can somebody talk about the building itself? Square footage? How many rooms it's got available? Do you have any of that?
But it's five.
You see it?
Yeah, five.
You got that.
You got it, right?
He got it. Yours is not.
So their building?
Okay, so what I'm looking at is a, just their sale listing and we're looking at eight hundred, eighty-six hundred square feet on point six-six acres in a commercial zoning area. Also has a drive-through.
Big parking lot.
Big parking lot. Um, can you talk about the bidding process now that that process is over? Because I see they were asking for two hundred and twelve thousand. Was the asking price and you guys are over that? So I mean, was there back and forth with bidding? Did you have to fight for this building?
So the bank people pretty much dictated how this sale went. And like you just stated, the original asking price was two twelve when we asked about it. Uh, they had so much interest that they raised the price to two fifty. And then we, I mean, we don't, we was never told who else was bidding or anything like that. But they raised the price on us. It wasn't like we started putting a bid in here and somebody else put a bid in and it ended at two fifty. They dictated the price to us. We just agreed to pay the
Can I jump in here? Lynn, just to make sure I got my head around that, the way you said that. They reached out to you guys and said that the price is two hundred and fifty thousand or clarify that.
Yeah, after the first after the first two twelve, they reached out to us and said it'd be two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and that was, that was before you submitted the first, the bid for the property is when that happened? When they said it was gonna be two fifty?
No, we submitted an intent to purchase.
It was what?
There was an intent to purchase we submitted and then they come back.
Okay, so the intent to purchase is this is hard. I know this may sound stupid, but be patient with me. The intent to purchase you're talking about, that was where a bid was initially submitted for the asking price of two hundred and twelve thousand? Is that what I'm understanding?
February fourteenth.
Right, but that was at the two hundred and twelve thousand initially?
Initially, yeah.
Okay, so you guys had bid at two hundred and twelve and then they reached back to you and said the price has been bumped to two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting that quoted correctly. When, when did they reach out to you guys and tell you that information? I mean, approximately to the best of your knowledge.
Next week.
It was within a week or two.
And that was on closed session.
So, so basically you guys had bid two hundred and twelve thousand around February fourteenth. About a week later, they had come back and said the price is now two hundred and fifty thousand. And you guys then at that point resubmitted a bid at that price? Is that kind of accurate representation?
It just sounds kind of funky when you're saying bid because they dictated the price book time.
Well, right. Or offer.
Yeah.
An offer. Have you guys gotten any blowback from people in the community? Namely, uh, other people who were interested in the building? Have you experienced any?
Myself, I have it.
I had a call.
He had a phone call, but
I had a phone call.
One phone call?
One phone call. And they said the government shouldn't be bidding against the amount of building.
And have you gotten any blowback?
No, the only blowback I've got is just what we're gonna do with the building now that now that it's public that we've signed the option.
It's interesting, very interesting, especially with the drive-through. That could be interesting at things like tax time.
It's one possibility.
So, you know what I mean, like huh?
Elections.
Elections.
Elections, uh, also when you, you if you do anything that's like similar to a rock match program, you know, things like that. Um, can we just talk more about the offices that could go into that building? Do you have any plans to clear?
First of all, regional planning. Northeast Regional Planning is gonna do a study on it for us. And how to utilize the building most efficiently. And they're gonna tell us what they've come up with. On who they think we should move there or who we shouldn't move.
And when is that going to start?
Well,
We haven't signed.
We haven't signed the contract with them yet. We just got ahold of them last week. We told them. But I asked them if they would do that or should do that. They said sure.
Do you have a projection of when you'd like to be into the building? You know, knowing that within you know, by June twenty-fourth, this deal will be done, you know?
Possibly before year end.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, hopefully before the end of the year.
Okay, and then do you guys have plans to hire more maintenance staff to maintain the building? Or are you gonna use existing?
We haven't made plans to hire anymore. Not yet.
And then, uh, how is this affecting the county budget? Are you?
We had money in the budget. We put money in the budget because like we said, we talked about trying to thinking about buying something else. So we had, well, I put it on one of Corey's questions there. He asked about the what was that?
That's the one where you had gen- general revenue out of building and grounds funds?
Yeah, yeah, there. We had it in general revenue, building and grounds fund where we put the money.
Okay, and so basically the county didn't need to borrow any money to buy this building? You guys are coming out of already existing funds?
Already.
Yeah, it was already in, we already had the money.
And then, um, well, I guess until you get the study done, because I would love to talk about different options. To be able to use the building for.
It's, yeah, it's, it could be done multiple things.
Yeah, it would be interesting to get
Voting, voting would be ideal, you know?
Well, it would be interesting to get the assessor out of the basement. That would be nice. You know what I mean? It would, it would be interesting to
How much they pay you to ask that?
It would, I mean, really, it would be interesting to have the assessor and the collector together because they work so much in tandem. You know what I mean? That they have access to each other. Are those the types of things that you guys are considering?
Yeah. One thing, uh, as far as, it's a key operation. We can move in there right now, some offices right now without doing anything.
Okay, do you think there are, there's work that needs to be done? That you're gonna have to do work to the building before you can?
We had it inspected by an engineering firm. And they said it was well worth the money and everything. It was in good shape.
The only part of the space that we'd have to do any work on is if we opened up the basement to use it for any office space or anything because it's not ADA compliant. So there would have to be something done.
So just to clarify, other than the ADA compliance with that part, there's not really any plans in the works to remodel the existing space in any other configuration?
No.
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 Um, it comes with desks and chairs and
Yeah.
It was actually a question I was gonna follow up with here later on, but since she brought that up, I was gonna ask, are the furnishings, desks and stuff included with the purchase price?
Yes. File cabinets, desk, chair.
Might be more, might be more stuff than we want.
What about equipment like copy machines or printers and?
I don't think so.
No, probably not. We don't know, but that
Yeah, I imagine that's probably at least.
The only thing that they told us they was gonna get out of there was the drive-up window. And
No, the ATM.
ATM, yeah, not the drive-up, ATM that's on the south side and internet stuff.
And then obviously the files and stuff like that. Yeah.
And their computers.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a room just for a server.
I guess they've been doing that with their bank buildings. They've been selling US banks, just leaving the furniture in there. And it's all Oakwood furniture.
You guys had mentioned earlier, I'm just kind of following up on your responses, just to clarify and make sure I understand the nature of your response on some of these. So like you were talking about that you've had discussions ongoing about uh, the need for additional space and things of that nature. Have those been discussions that have been, um, and I may not be saying this right, but like in, like what we're doing now, like an open session discussion where other people have been involved in discussion? Has this been more of a, it was in closed session while we were talking about real estate things? Like, how would you characterize, when you say there's been discussions, how would you characterize those discussions?
I would consider an open session and no, no recording, no recording on minutes, just discussion amongst.
Well, that's why I was kind of asking, because I really, I tried to look at those when Tammy sends those and I don't remember seeing anything about that. But I, I mean, it's easy to miss stuff too. That's why I wanted to ask the question.
Brainstorm, brainstorm discussion.
So kind of like study session type environments? You mentioned that money was put in the budget in January. How much was put into the budget? Was it specific to what you anticipated the purchase price be? Or what, what kind of a budget number was put in there to? Because at that point, you really didn't know what you were buying yet. So how much budget cushion do you have in there that was placed in anticipating a move like this?
David's looking at the budget right now.
Page eleven of the budget. We have a building fund. We have to be putting building study in of thirty thousand. We have a building fund of two hundred thousand. Plus
So the thirty thousand is basically like maintenance expense for this building and then the two hundred is the
Thirty thousand, just study, study what, if we need to do.
Oh, gotcha.
We, we know we're down in space, so we need to do a study, so.
And the money's all in general revenue.
Plus, plus to complete the rest of it. We got a, a fund of future courthouse capital improvements. And we had a hundred thousand in there, so that's where the rest of the fifty thousand.
So thirty thousand was allocated for studying, two hundred thousand allocated for acquiring? And then you've got another fund with the future improvements for how much again?
Hundred thousand.
All right, these hearing aids and these big echoing rooms don't work well. I apologize. You mentioned that other options had been talked about. Can you characterize some of the other options that you did look at that you ultimately decided weren't as feasible for whatever reason or?
Well, there were several buildings, several buildings up on the square.
Well, and I guess I kind of asked that question with the thought in mind that I have had one or two people that had kind of asked, well, what about the former prosecutor's office? I'm assuming that was probably one space that was looked at among maybe some others, but go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
And, and Cook's Men's Store was talked about. But like Cook's Men's Store, we'd had to have a lot of money spent off to make offices. And it still wasn't ADA compliant. After all the recent storms and the buildings falling down, I, I don't know if it would have been in the county's best interest to buy a building that would have a lot of future maintenance, big future maintenance coming up in the next five to ten years.
In the prosecutor's office over there, didn't have to work near the square footage.
Yeah, it wasn't very big.
I don't know if you still have a sheet of those questions in front of you. Number twenty, I asked a question about if the commission had concerns about putting you in competition with private business owners, um, or in Parrish County tax base. Never mind, forget that, scratch that. I already, we already talked about that, never mind. I, I had a note written down. I forgot to cross it off when you addressed it. Kind of coming back to the budget allocation question. Knowing that you allocated funds into the building funds to plan for this possibility. Obviously taxes really haven't raised or anything like that. There's not been a bond issue. So the question inherently there is, were there other budget areas that were reduced to offset increasing that budget line? Or can you kind of address the dynamics within the budget of how the left hand funded the right hand kind of situation?
Yeah, but when we went through a budget mission, we had extra money set and and that we wasn't planning on using. And we knew we needed to buy a building, so if we didn't have a line item, then that required a would require a amendment of the budget.
So basically, these funds were earmarked specifically for this purpose and had been already kind of sitting in the budget?
Yes.
So it didn't pull out of any other budget?
No.
How, how long has that been the case? Is that something that was just budgeted in for this current year's budget? Or has that been a fund that's kind of been there over the past few years in anticipation of possibly using it?
Future, yeah. Future courthouse repairs have been in for a couple of years. The, we just put that building fund in this year.
And I guess that was the one specifically I was interested in, like you talked about the, the study and purchase. I, I'm not using the same name you're using.
We do, it was out of space. When we had to move the prosecutor up here and then we heard that the judge maybe wanting to head office back. Then we knew we was out of space and we knew we had to do something.
So that's kind of what prompted the
And, and we got, we got auditors coming in with nowhere, no, no room for them to even sit in. So we'd, we'd probably have to sit in here in the commission room.
We've got a lot of stuff in storage around here that up on, in the attic that needs to be out of there because it's, oh, the weight.
Right.
And that's another thing we haven't talked about yet either is
Oh, we were getting there. Go ahead.
Starting this year, we had a, we had had quite a difficult time to get insurance on this courthouse. We had, what, ten, ten companies that, that were asked through our broker. And the only one we got to even give us a bid was Mofirm, which has to give us a bid. So they raised it seventy percent and we all know that this building has been very well kept and maintained, but it's a hundred and eighteen years old. And that's what their main reason is for wanting to raise the rates.
Yeah, we did in the Republic last year with the insurance, but this year they said it's too old.
What were the rates last year?
No, Tammy's probably got that down. We didn't, we didn't have that on.
Insurance.
General revenue, insurance and bond.
And that's not by any means saying we're not gonna continue to give it the best we can.
Show what we spent.
No, it's right here. That's what we spent.
Oh, for forty thousand? That's approved.
No, for actual.
Well, that was insurance and bond, but that ain't insurance on a forty thousand.
That wouldn't include it on the courthouse right there.
Oh, fifty-one thousand. So, because we paid that's bonds. We paid, we paid, okay, fifty-one thousand.
And that was for twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-three. But I think that was two years in.
And then what's the new rate?
We approved a hundred and sixty-two.
Thousand?
But some of that, some of that is sheriff and, and road bridge and everything.
The theirs are broke out into their own.
Yeah, theirs are broken out in there, but we approved hundreds, but I think we got two payments coming for this year. Because we didn't spend nothing in twenty, we didn't spend nothing in twenty-four, so we got two payments. Our payment didn't go through until this year, so we got two insurance payments going through this year. Because we was trying to get insurance and our insurance didn't.
Yeah.
I was just trying to figure out what the courthouse was at the last insurance payment and then since the increase, what the courthouse insurance payment would be.
Well, she's digging that up. I was gonna ask one of the rumors, you gotta love small county communities, but one of the rumors that I've heard people bring up is poss- and I know you guys are studying what you're gonna do with this building, but one of the possible things that's going around is the possibility of putting a jail facility into the new building. Is that even being studied or is that completely, you can rule that out?
No. Another thing about this building, the boiler is old.
Yeah, I was actually, the question I was just getting ready to ask you is, can you characterize the current shape of this building and the issues you're facing with it currently? Which is kind of what you were getting ready to touch on?
Well, the boiler is the main thing that might cause a problem down the road because I don't know how old it is.
It's over thirty.
Over thirty.
Yeah. And we haven't, haven't inspected all the time, so it's
I mean, in terms of the overall structural integrity of this courthouse, as far as foundational issues, building structure itself, are there any current? I mean, obviously it's an old building, but there's some issues maybe there.
Basement, but we had a drain put all around the outside of it here about, about five years ago.
Oh, it's longer than that.
Maybe longer than that.
We started with drainage. We started with drainage and we just been improving. We did the roof.
Put on a new roof?
We got a CBP grant to do the elevator. So that'd be upgraded. We had to upgrade electrical work into the courtrooms and we had to run new wire. I'm talking ten years, let me see if I
One thing about, I'm, I'd also about the lighting in the building. We put all new lights in the building and saved a lot of money on expense.
Okay, we generator, we put a generator in for nine-one-one. Um, we repaired sidewalks outside in twenty twenty-three. All the offices got new flooring. Put in between twenty-two and twenty-three.
And some of them repainted.
Uh, we remodeled several offices. Such as the county clerk.
Assessor.
Assessor. Well, the recorder removed, moved the cabinets and counters, but
So with, with that question being addressed, I guess my follow-up in the direction of that question is, what's the future of this courthouse building as far as the overall vision? Is this something where you guys are looking with an eye to this building may need to be replaced at some point in the foreseeable future or just, what's kind of the overall future as you guys see it for this building?
I, I, I hope this building stands for another fifty years. We never know. With all the buildings falling around the square and the wind we've been getting, we never have, we never know. Structurally, right now, I consider this building in excellent shape.
For its age, yeah.
Yeah, for its age. There, we had a leak the other day up in the roof, even though we had new roof. And it was kind of, kind of guaranteed. Garment company came up and they did it. It was a seam, seam that time I'm done and they repaired the seam.
So fair to characterize that this purchase is not something that's viewed as eventually replacing this building. It's more of an annex, additional with the idea of both buildings being permanently in place.
One thing I might add, if something would happen just this year, there's enough room, we could get by down there. With everybody moving in there.
Including the courtroom?
If we're gonna have to ADA compliant for the basement. The court, the basement's got a big meeting room. It would be big enough.
Yeah.
If needed, if, if emergency happens.
I think I've been down there for a meeting. I think I've been down there for a meeting for
You've been down there for nursing home meeting.
Yes, yes, I have, okay. Can we talk about overhead on the new building? Is it, you know, is it electric and gas?
Well, we called the city to see what they've, the bank has been paying. And they said probably around an average of a thousand dollars a month per year.
Okay, water.
Water, electric, consumer.
Yeah.
Okay, so and then you'll need more phone lines and internet connection? I can't think of anything else that
And we've already got it insured. After we made the down payment, while we got insurance on it, as we could then.
And then did you have as much of a, a trouble getting quotes on that building as you did on this one?
No.
Yeah, that one did scare them.
So they came right back with a quote?
Yeah.
How old is that building?
The main building, one of the first buildings in
Sixty-two?
Sixty-two.
Added on what, in ninety-six or seven?
Ninety-six or seven it was added on to and remodeled. They spent a lot of money on it then.
Yes, a lot of money. You wanna look at this study that we had?
This week, he all got a book of the, the study that engineers did on it.
They just looked at the building to make sure it's structurally sound. They got a little bit of recommendations about the parking lot. The rest of the building is really considered very good shape.
Back to insurance. We paid eighty-one thousand five forty. And then that, this time we had to pay a hundred and forty-five thousand three oh one and fifty cents.
Can you say those numbers again, sorry?
Eighty-one thousand five forty. And that was twenty-four?
Yes, well, and the twenty, we could pay in December normally for the year.
And then what was?
And then this year we had to pay one forty-five, three oh one and fifty cents.
That's total.
And that's insurance for this building?
Yes. Only this building.
That's only that.
Right.
That's all I looked up, I didn't even look up for that one.
And you said that was explained to you guys basically being primarily because of the age of this building?
Yeah.
And then, have any of you ever had a claim on the insurance?
For the building?
Uh-huh.
Well, the sheriff.
We had some lightning damage.
Lightning hit something down there.
That was computer, it wasn't structure of the building.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, we, we installed some surge protectors in the, in the circuit breaker box to help cover that now.
And that is strictly property insurance, that's not liabilities or anything like that, right? Like, that's not any liability insurance that would cover like jail operations or?
It's probably all.
So that's property and liability.
Yeah.
Uh, and then this study, how much was, how much did this cost?
Uh, we haven't got the bill yet, but we called him yesterday and he said probably a little less than three thousand.
So you just got the one vault structure internally in that building, the big vault?
It's got three.
Yeah.
Three? I didn't know that.
There's one right at, right at where they started the addition.
Yeah.
And then there's one downstairs.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that one. I'm assuming those are all remaining intact and.
Um, the recommendations are on the second page about parking lots and main recommendations on the, we worked on drainage into parking lot.
Are there any zoning effects of this purchase that would cause ripple effects to surrounding properties in terms of zoning type issues? Or does it substantially change anything that way or?
Nope.
Huh, the roof looks good. Yeah, the roof like, what is that, some pebble, membrane?
Waterproof membrane.
It's nice.
Until you tear it and it's not.
Then you got to patch it if you tear it.
Well, gentlemen, I appreciate your time, I'm gonna bail out, I've got a matter of eight minutes here in about five minutes. But I thank you for your cooperation and assistance with the information. Have a good day.
Okay.
Is there anything you guys wanna add? Anything we haven't asked about? Don't forget your recorder.
I just thought of that.
That we haven't asked about that you think it's important for people to know?
I would add that I think that this is a very good, long-term investment for us. It's gonna add us some newer office space that we've needed for quite a while. And down the road, it's gonna be something that's available to commissioners down the road. I think they're gonna be really glad we made this move. Puts a little more pressure on us for making the move, but it's something that I think really needed to be done.
You concur with that?
Yes, it's very, very cost-effective. Um, we're seeing, we're seeing other places struggling to remodel old courthouses. Spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to remodeling.
Or millions we spent.
Millions, okay, well, we're, at Dare County spent eight million, over eight million on their courthouse. That's scary when you think about it, requires bonds and elections and more taxes. This way we can purchase and we have, we have a building without increasing our tax.
Okay, well, I'm gonna shut this video down. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you.